If you join us and stand, then trust your shots and we'll listen to prayer.
Right, and sit down, I'm ready to go. Dear heaven father, uh, thank you for this glorious, numbing glorious day outside. If you asked for a picture perfect day, I think you just created it and we uh, we really appreciate it. Help guide us into the decisions that we're about to make, make them for the best of your name and uh, to boost this college in a positive image. Thank you for all you do for us, thank you, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, you should have an agenda in front of you for today's meeting, if you have a chance to look it up, we'll take the motion to approve it.
Absolutely.
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. You also have your minutes for the September board meeting, if you have a chance to look those over, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same. Alright, takes consideration of college financial report, this is you, Ben.
Start on page six of your board notes. Look at our comparison of last fiscal year to this fiscal year as of uh, August 31st. Uh, so you can see compared to our previous year, of course tuition and fees are uh, below where we were in this time last year. So that's been that decline in enrollment pattern that we've been seeing for a while when talking about. Um, so that's a planned for decrease. Uh, then in other categories, you can see we're actually up just a little bit, particularly in travel brands largely due to uh, the CARES effect. On the next page, looking at our expenses, uh, fairly comparable, actually a little below what we were actually operating expenses. So, obviously we see some savings there, which you can see then on page eight where you have the revenue money expenses were actually uh, just a bit ahead of where we were this time last year. So that's good news. Uh, the next two pages then are just those uh, details of those numbers. Page eleven looks at September, uh, to the quarter of the, this quarter, twenty-four percent of the fiscal year, looking at our budget to actual. So, uh, talking again at the tuition and fees, we have planned for that uh, decrease in the tuition and fees, that decrease in enrollment. Uh, accordingly, so you can see we're, we're just right about at the fifty percent mark uh, on that. Uh, that include, that actually include all of our fall registrations. Uh, spring will not have started yet, so that's a pretty good picture of where we want to be at that point in the fiscal year. Other categories, uh, similar, uh, student aid is always going to lag us a little bit behind. We will have just started uh, some of those processes as of September, so um, that tends to be a little more fifty fifty. So, we'll see that creep up as we get further into the semester. And then auxiliary enterprises, uh, fairly comparable, that's mainly what you have in and uh, the college store there. So you can see that that has performed uh, well, yeah, in fall semester as well. And then in the bottom half of that page, we look at expenses, kind of use that twenty-five percent as our benchmark. Uh, you can see pretty much all of our categories pretty close to that, to that goal. Uh, there's always a little bit of timing differences, especially down like in scholarships for example. Uh, so then on page twelve, again, that's just the uh, the details of those same numbers. On page thirteen is our capital budget. Uh, this does reflect some of the changes that uh, were in the uh, amendments that you guys uh, approved uh, month before last. That is all reflected there. And then on page fourteen, we have some additional amendments uh, that we're putting forward as well, uh, that affect both the operating budget and the capital budget on the bottom half of that page. Uh, you see a lot of changes there to uh, projects for reserves and cares. This uh, is not really changing any of the projects that we haven't already talked about, it's just aligning the budget to those projects that we've already verbally talked about. Just to get the money in the right spots, so uh, we've had just some changes there on what we wanted to accomplish with that money. So then uh, following that, you see our cash index, uh, report, just show the cash position. On page seventeen is our uh, cash pie, if you will. Uh, there's actually a typo in the title of that, the total should read eighteen million rather than sixteen million, um, that's just a typo.
It's two typos this year.
If you add up all the numbers, they add up to eighteen, we just didn't get typed right into the title. Uh, following that, you see our list of CDs, those are all, we don't have any contingency CDs presently, uh, but we do have a number, you see their scholarship and now CDs. Um, of course no changes in contingency CDs, since we're not having it at the moment, we're still um, getting more interest off of uh, just holding those funds in checking uh, versus CD rates at the moment. Then uh, finally on page twenty-two, our bidding report, we go two days out right now for the library R and D system that's funded by CARES, as well as the Saxon roof replacement, um, which we're hoping is, will actually be funded through uh, state M and R funds. But that would be a little price back, so, do you have any questions?
If no questions, then we have a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
I'll make one.
Motion's second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Texas President's Report, Dr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, start with just a quick update on some construction projects, the bogs fields are coming to a close. Uh, you can see the lights, uh, light poles along the roadway there have been completed, all the hardscaping is done. Uh, and we should within the next two weeks finish these fundamentally. Uh, a little bit of sod delay, some um, bleachers and benches to install. Uh, they are playing on both fields now and they're moving right along. Uh, the faculty lounge social distancing project is coming to completion, we should have been completed this week. However, there were some problems with the cabinets, so that will be delayed about two weeks uh, beyond that. So, our projects are coming along and we're gearing up to start a few more as time permits and uh, bidding to be completed. So, wanting to talk about Constitution Day and with us is Ms. Judy Davis, who was one of the two faculty who put this together along with Dr. Ryan Bixby. And she's gonna tell us about Constitution Day.
Hi, so September seventeen is Constitution Day, um, federally, we celebrate the signing of the Constitution. And this year, we decided to focus on the Bill of Rights. And so we had a group of speakers that came and talked about most of our Bill of Rights for us. And so our speakers for the day were Mr. Mark and Mr. Todd Richardson, both came and spoke, uh, they did, uh, they did amendments ten and nine. We had Judges John Bloodworth and Wade Pierce came and talked about the fifty-sixth amendment, those were really fun. We had Sean Russkerson who talked about the second amendment and we had Dr. John Ladue talk about the first amendment. So Sean, you, you know, is our criminal justice instructor and John Ladue is our library uh, person. And so they came and talked, and I did one on the third amendment. We had eighty-two students who attended in person, we had additional students who attended via Zoom. Uh, we had multiple faculty members who came and uh, and joined in as well. We gave them free constitutions, they had little pocket constitutions, they had the opportunity to sign in and get um, gift cards. We ended up with two fifty-dollar gift cards, uh, courtesy of the Student Life Office with C.J. Kleiber, who had two students win those. Then we also had catering for um, the, the speakers and the faculty. And that was uh, that was coordinated by Michelle Brown with the Endowment Trust and Davina Bixby, recruitment coordinator, they got that together for us. And the catering was provided by Crabbe and Company. And then we had gift baskets for all of the speakers, that was also coordinated by Michelle and Davina. And then we had additional help from Michelle Woldridge and we had Eric Pickens and we had April Berger and Dr. Payne, um, all helped us get this together. And so we had a really successful, really fun day, a lot of interaction between the students and one another and the speakers. And so it was quite enjoyable and I'm sorry that some of us couldn't be there, I know that Dr. Payne was downtown that day, so we didn't get to join him, so it was, but it was really fun. Have any questions about anything?
Mr. Richardson, any thoughts on your experience for that?
Well, I thought it was a wonderful day and I'm always thrilled to see uh, folks interested in the founding of our country and our constitution and it was an exciting day. And uh, I was thrilled to be a part of it.
So, what's our plans for the future?
Um, I'm kind of thinking of going a little different next year, I'm thinking about scavenger hunt, where students have to discover for themselves some information about the constitution. But I, I'm not a hundred percent sure yet, we're working on that, but I will get together with Dr. Bixby and we'll come up something good.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And then preview day.
Hi, I'm Davina Bixby, the coordinator for initial standard recruitment, and we are a need deepening preview days. We have just hosted four, uh, our fourth one was yesterday. Uh, we had ten that we, ten dates that we had scheduled, we reached out to all of our schools and based on coordination, we had six dates that were full. And then we actually, just about two hours ago, added another date, so we will have seven preview days this fall. Um, so far, we've had thirteen schools attend, uh, and you can see the schools listed up there. Um, and we have the upcoming schools, um, added to that is going to be Southern Reynolds, New Madrid, Clarkton, and possibly Farmington. Uh, so so far we had three hundred and fifty-one students attend with the ones that we've already held. Um, we're getting good reviews on them, uh, they're enjoying it, the students really like going out and seeing the different departments or interacting with the faculty. They want to see more of that. Uh, some of the feedback that we have been getting is they want more options, they want to see more programs that we have. So as we get these reviews in, we're taking them into consideration to plan for next year and see how we move forward next year. But they do like seeing all the different varieties, uh, we're offering them, you know, opportunities to see nursing, allied health, which includes paramedic, um, a general session on M L T, O T A, other allied health programs, students may be interested in uh, the meeting with our education faculty. Uh, checking out our labs upstairs, they love the hands-on with the labs, uh, University Center, they're awesome, talking with them and students that are in the transfer pathway. And then we have business, accounting, computer technology with Dr. Malone, fire science and forestry, and they love the demonstration with fire science. Uh, we just have students that want to see a little bit of everything and we don't have it set up this year, they're on certain tracks. But um, we're taking that, like I said, into consideration for improving even next year.
Very good, so that's your thought about main recruiting activity for bringing high school seniors onto campus. And we're doing it a little differently, we used to do much larger single dates where many more schools would be participating at once. And our focus now is concentrating on a fewer number of schools at a single time and giving them a more individualized, deeper periods. So, so far, as Ms. Bixby said, the feedback's been pretty good with that. Any questions for Davina?
Do you re, I'm sorry, go ahead, you go. Do you guys, uh, do you take them to the lightest sports complex, let the students look at the new gym?
For this event, we did specifically add that just with timing and getting that up there, but we have included that um, for our conference conference. And when we, uh, we have schools that oftentimes come with a personalized tour, no, not in a big event like this, and we definitely do include that because it's one of our new facilities that we want to show off.
Excellent.
Does every senior from these schools come or do they opt in, opt out?
Um, some schools are sending, you know, their whole class, some of them, they choose, like with P D, like we didn't get, if P D came with their whole class, it would have been a day just for them. Um, we do have though, a lot of schools traditionally, from my understanding, um, have only sent their junior class. And this year, they're sending their juniors and seniors because our seniors last year were stopped on the line. So we're getting, you know, both classes in some schools.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you very much, welcome. And I'm gonna ask uh, A.D. Brian Best, come forward and talk about Raider Madness.
So we had a good crowd on Raider Madness, which was on uh, Friday, October first. At Raider Madness, we had a cheer team and both teams in women's basketball. We had a three-point shooting contest and freshman Jennifer Mellon made nineteen threes in a row to win the women's uh, in a minute. Uh, I think she danced for twenty, but she made nineteen in a row, which is pretty cool. And then Lamar Wilkerson on the men's team won the three-point shooting contest and he ended up winning the overall. And then for a fun thing, Kenyon Hodges won our dump contest, which was pretty cool. And then uh, both teams scrimmaged a little bit and uh, our women are ranked number eight in the preseason poll, so uh, Coach Wiggs wanted a little bit higher and some of his fan base wanted a little higher as we got the final four last year and ten girls back, but I, I'm happy with that, I still think the preseason poll doesn't really mean as much, it's kind of a target on his back actually, but anyway. He was uh, wanting a little bit higher ranking or whatever than that. Uh, they have a scrimmage next Wednesday, be their last scrimmage, and then they open up uh, at Williams Baptist on the first. And then they have a home game against Dyer York State on November third. And then they have a classic on the seventh, seventh with Wabash and Omni. Uh, men's basketball team, we're finished with all our scrimmages and we open up in the first Midwest Bank Classic on November fifth and sixth. And uh, on the sixth, we play the number six ranked Johnny Logan, so uh, be an interesting weekend. Mineral Area is ranked fifth and they're the other team in it, so actually they have to play each other as well on Friday night. So, number five, Mineral Area playing number six Johnny Logan on Friday night, uh, November fifth. Any questions, but Raider Madness was a success, good crowd, everybody had fun, uh, Tim Hager did a great job in seeing and taking care of it.
Uh, good crowds, um, your scrimmage games, girls scrimmage games, Raider Madness, very happy with the turnout. I think people are ready to get back in the gym and do that regular season, not the competitive season, so, is it, it was fun, huh? Fun night.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, baseball's got scrimmage at home today and they have one more and softball's finished for the preseason. They will go again until spring on their, on their uh, thing and then we have the big rodeo last, last weekend, I think he's up next as well, so.
Yep, so I'm gonna call Coach Pitts up to talk about the Three Rivers Championship College Rodeo.
Yep, we just finished uh, this third fraternity with a rodeo, uh, had another successful rodeo. Not, not as much success as I want, I, I'm not gonna be happy to make thirty, forty thousand, but um, not, not losing anything is a success. Uh, Friday night was rough on us and missed the rain all day and then come in at about five-thirty for thirty-five minutes sideways rain. Um, made buckles all in the arena, which the crew that we have, the J.C.'s, they're, they're awesome. They went out there, they opened the drain up, they took us, we had to delay the start thirty minutes, but we, there was hardly any water in the arena. Like it was amazing, like they, they popped the drain and it went from a lake to just sand. Uh, so blessed to have those guys on board with us, uh, for all they do. But the motorcycle guys, we took a big gamble this year and, and I, I run the guys, motorcycle guys and it hurt us enough, not having them on Friday night with them not being able to perform. Uh, I think there would have been a lot more people on Saturday had they seen them Friday night and word of mouth got around. I know the people that saw on Saturday was amazed, uh, even coaches that I thought would not give, give a, a rip about them was standing there just with their jaws dropped, uh, so it was, it was a pretty cool ordeal, um, actually really cool standing there right by them. And I think it was a gamble that, that paid off, I mean, we had the biggest crowd we've ever had on Saturday, um, so uh, it was a good rodeo. Kids did okay, they, we've had a slow start to the season, we did have several that's in the top three in the region, the lower round, and then uh, team are up and we have, I think they're third, two guys are third, I try not to look at the stadium, it's still the end, we're called out, we're gonna get caught up like the kids worrying about it. I just want to go do our best every time, so uh, but we're, we're hanging in and, and doing good, we just, we gotta get better, so. Two more rodeos left, this is my turn, any questions?
Where are we going, the rodeos being?
Uh, the over two, two weeks, we go to Southern Arkansas University, uh, Maggiore, and then our Kentucky, the week before Thanksgiving will be our last one.
Just curious, what kind of circle?
Yes.
Could be four or five in the fall?
Five, the fall, five and spring.
Five, fall, five and spring.
And I hope we win rodeo of the year, like, I don't wanna do anything halfway and I try to put on the most professional event I can and uh, and like the, the kids really appreciate it. Our, from our awards that we give, our cups, to uh, the stock they draw, I, I keep everything where everybody has a chance to win it and I think they appreciate it. And that gives, even winter day, it gives us a good shot, maybe to get rodeo of the year.
I keep checking, I still have my old jewelry left and I haven't called yet.
Oh!
White dollars on my shirt. Now I phone call yet.
I said English, I always have, I have trouble with my computer.
It's our family's favorite event every year, it's very high quality, this year was even more focused on family and the kids. Uh, they just absolutely love it and so do we, do a fantastic job of it.
We, we did try to push that a lot harder this year and I think that helped us a lot too on Saturday. I, I wouldn't mind uh, maybe trying to extend it to Friday night as well, Thursday's never gonna be a huge night. Um, but we had the mechanical bull, uh, the face painting, the petting zoo, all that. And the mechanical bull was there till after dark, uh, when the rodeo was over, I was looking gavel out and I couldn't believe that was still alive and there's a door for kids to get a cat at work. Uh, so that was a big hit. And I appreciate you doing the implication.
I've got a four-year-old grandson, he got headbutted trying to ride the bull, then he got bit by a horse, the petting zoo. And all the tears, he, all he could say was, I'm gonna ride that bull again.
We also had a knee open on Saturday, I thought was pretty special, pretty cool.
It was very good.
We honored the thirteen soldiers that fell in Afghanistan and, and did thirteen riding those horses and I ain't gonna lie, I, I get emotional sometimes, uh, big baby. And it did bring tears to my eyes while we were doing it and I thought that was really cool, so.
Very well done.
Are any of these kids are uh, further in their career after they've done, what, what's their paths?
They uh, so right now, the Cole Skinner that won second in the nation, he missed our short round Saturday and I was pretty upset about that. He didn't tell me until the last minute, but he, in missing our short round, he qualified to the PBR finals in Las Vegas in three weeks. So he made it worthwhile, uh, and then two weeks ago, one of our kids rode a bounty bull up in Illinois uh, for twelve thousand on bounty and then went in the rodeo that weekend, he won close to, it was fourteen thousand, eight hundred something dollars and what he ended up winning on the weekend for just that one round. Uh, so they're doing good on, on continuing to be professionals and, and like, I want, I want them to go on and do big things for the college, just like the PBR finals. I've set up a column, I'm gonna have some shirts and patches made, we're gonna have Three Rivers College on him to be on TV, like uh.
Dress him up.
But the main thing is, I want them to go and have successful careers, but I want to be good people. And I'm sure that's so hard to, to, to get them to be the right type of people. And the hard thing is when they get to college, freshmen and sophomore year, they're kids and that's the hardest part. When they get to their junior year, when most of them, I don't get no more, like, they're grownups and, and starting to be better, but I like the challenge, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, Coach, and I want to cover some upcoming events, uh, so October advising seminar, October twentieth, we're gonna have some resources for students there. Uh, this will be our second of three advising seminars, uh, they're either in Thatcher one oh eight or via Zoom, two P M. Uh, then media literacy week in the library, October twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth, they have a lot of high-quality programming planned. Uh, so if you have a chance, come out and uh, participate in literacy week. Then the next patrons of the art shows, the Brazilian All-Stars will be here October twenty-sixth, seven P M is showtime. Music department's fall recital will be October twenty-eighth, seven P M in the Ten and Fine Arts Center, that's free to attend. And then on November third, we will have the ribbon cutting for our crisp remodeling and expansion. Uh, with tours and interactive program demonstrations available just following that. So, that'll be a um, really great time, the Raiders' first Midwest Bank Classic is November fifth through seventh. And then the Lady Raiders' coverage in classic is November sixth and seventh. MCCA Angle Conference, November tenth through the twelfth, uh, a chance for all of the community colleges to get together and share ideas. Red Cross Blood Drive, November eleventh, from ten A M to three P M, conference room of the Best Activities Center. So come and support your fellow man by giving a little blood, November eleventh that evening, dinner at five, trivia at six, Kennet trivia night. Um, one of our fundraising uh, events through the Endowment Trust that brings scholarship money to the external location for Kennet. And that sir gives the present.
Thank you, Dr. Payne. We do have a few items to discuss in executive session, we get a motion in the second to do that.
Very well.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shawk?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Trusty Patterson?
Yes, we'll adjourn into executive session now, thank you very much. Alright, that takes us to item six on our agenda, consideration approval of changes to P P forty-three, ten, absences from college, Dr. Payne?
Yes, what's going on with this is we had two policies. One referred to as types of leave, which you will find on the last page of this, which is absences of college. Uh, so the types of leave policy that we had was the entire section labeled now authorized types of leave. That was a separate policy of its own, associated with a authorized leave regulation. We then had absences from the college as well, so there were two separate policies. What's going on here is we looked at that and went, why? Leave is a absence from the college, we should take that policy and combine it with this other policy and not have to. Then you will see in your information items, the authorized types of leave regulation has been changed to now reference this as a parent policy and add voting leave and um, victim of domestic violence leave. Both of those are required types of leave uh, in the state of Missouri, so we needed to add those to the regulation. And then we always take the opportunity, if we're gonna touch one, we review everything again and correct any kind of scripter error or lack of grammatical parallelism or any other issue that we can, we can find, so there are some minor pieces there, yes sir?
Is, is civilly jury duty?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is the changes to this and the associated regulation.
Any questions on that? Move to the P. Motion's second.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shawk?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Trusty Patterson?
Yes. Consideration approval personnel actions, associated documents, got about five items there, if uh, Trusty Shawk would make a motion to approve those.
As a whole, with the associated documents in? I'll say it.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shawk?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Trusty Patterson?
Yes. Got some informational items included, our next board meeting is November seventh.
Get some informational items included. Our next board meeting is November 17th, 2021. If I have anything else? If not, we'll take a motion to approve or adjourn. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.